And for the pledge of allegiance. Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, it's gonna take me a second. You don't have a mic. Oh.
Blake, is that where?
Sounds like it works. Alright, next up is, uh, hearing from visitors. You may present a concern to the board during the time reserved for public comment. If this is a case, we ask that you, prior to the start of the meeting, sign in noting the topic you intend to address to the board. Come to the microphone up front and state your name. Do not reflect adversely on the political or economic view, ethnic background, character, or motives of any individual. Do keep your comments concise, non-emotional, and brief. The board is interested in hearing your concerns and your compliments, too. It is best to call the superintendent's office a couple days before the meeting. If this isn't possible, you can ask the board president to recognize you during the hearing session. And we'll go for three minutes per person for a total of twenty-one minutes. Uh, first up is Tessa Stanger. And make sure the green light on the microphone is checked, and you might have to hold it a little closer to your, closer to your mouth. A little bit closer.
Not now.
That sounds better.
Um, I would like the district to look at the cellphone rule for lunchtime and breaks. This is my first year. I've been homeschooling for six years. My son's cellphone was taken away at lunchtime on Monday. There was about nine kids, and there was five of the kids that had their phones out, and he was the only one that his phone was taken. I was pretty upset. I will let you guys know that I did not sign the forms. I crossed all the cellphone stuff out and said I do not waive mine or my child's rights. I'm not against the rule. It's just like being at work. Phones should not be in the bathroom or the classroom. Okay, I agree with that. But when you're on your personal time, lunchtime, or a break, I think these kids should be able to either check in, whatever. You don't know if it's a single mom that's raising their child that maybe needs to get a message to them, or they need to get a message to their parent to say, hey, I'm gonna do A, B, and C. So it can be set up that either a grandparent knows that they need to check in or something. I'm trying to be very logical about this. I understand where you guys are coming from, and I agree with certain rules. But I also feel like what these ladies said, I don't know if it was you guys, the first one that came back, came to cellphone efficacy. I agree with that. But I can also tell you that not every kid is glued to their phone, so they're being punished. I get that there's rules, there's concerns, but I really think that maybe we should look at how we're coming across, too. If we're supposed to be teaching them that they're young adults and there's consequences for their actions, I'm not against them losing their cellphones in classroom. But what I am against is them not being taught or learned that there's a time and place. And you have to start that at some point in their life. An eighth grader that's gonna be going to high school should be able to use their phone at lunchtime. Not in the bathroom, not in the classroom. I agree with that. But I think that we need to look at this and maybe do an ad hoc or a survey or something. I think that some of the teachers are struggling, too, because these kids will take a picture of something, you know? Like the last five minutes of class, let them pull out their phones, take those pictures. The ones that abuse it, they don't get to do it. I wish Saturday school was still a thing because consequences were major when we were younger. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. Uh, next up is Jim Hopwood.
Man, you guys are kinda intimidating. I wanna thank Tessa for her comments. That's kinda cool. So, um, I have a, I have a little saying that I don't publicize it or say it. I just say it to myself in things that, in my world that I'm involved in. I, I, it's always that if it's of God, it oughta be better. And so I, I would like to see the, this Prosser School District kind of adopt that. You know, if it's a Prosser Schools, let's make it the best it can be. So last, last, or two weeks ago, at the last meeting, my ears were perked a little bit in regards to the substitute teaching pay. Um, I'm one of these guys that's got my ears a little bit to the ground. I kinda hear what's going on and, cause it's, it's, I'm a community guy. By the way, I'm a Mustang. I graduated from Prosser and, uh, three kids graduated from Prosser. I'm, I'm here. I might as well buy a cemetery plot. I, I've known for the last ten years personally, and I, and I'm not a substitute teacher, never even wanted to be. But I've heard, I've known for the last ten years that substitute teacher pay in Prosser is low. I, I hear that. So here's what I'm gonna say is if neighboring school districts are paying a hundred and eighty bucks a day, as a taxpayer, pay two hundred. But let's make sure we're getting the best subs we can get. In addition to that, uh, a little bit of a clarification. I know, I know of, this year, I know of two people that I know personally. I've kinda mentored and discipled, um, two people that have recently gotten their AA degree. One of which is in Biblical Studies, and she was told that she couldn't sub. And I said, no, let's, let's figure it out. So we've, we've contacted some people and evidently she can't. Okay. Um, the other person also has an AA degree, and she was told she can't sub unless she was enrolled in a education program, uh, like to get her ma, to get her bachelor's in, in teaching. So we just need to, maybe at the administration level, maybe we need to, uh, make some clarification there and fix, fix some loopholes. But you know what? Um, I've been coming here for quite a while. Prosser historically, and we learned this through the Tom Moore era. If, if, if it's, if it's the best it can be, Prosser's gonna support you. And if you wanna float a bond, be the best you can be. So Prosser, if it's of the Prosser School District, it oughta be better. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anybody else? Or Blake, anybody online? Okay, that will conclude the, uh, hearing of visitors' portion. Moving on to student rep reports. Ezra, you're up.
Um, so ASB and Leadership have been preparing for homecoming, which is gonna take place next week, and I think we're all pretty excited. And then just looking in the future, we have chosen our recipients for Pink Week, um, which is gonna be Ms. Bagnall and then Coach Silva, the soccer coach. So really excited about that.
Thank you. Olivia?
Adding on to Ezra, we have, like, some events for next week are the regular Powder Puff and Blackout Volleyball. And the theme, I don't know what exactly, but it's related to Harry Potter. Um, so we're having Quidditch games, which I also don't know Harry Potter, so I don't exactly know what those are either. But that's something new next week that we're doing. It's gonna be between grades. Um, and the middle school is also having Spirit Days next week. One of them that I thought was funny were students are dressing like teachers and teachers are dressing like students.
That could be entertaining. Uh, thank you. Any questions for Ezra or Olivia? Thank you. Uh, moving on to discussion items, uh, school building reports. First up is Jelaine Gronovell-Witstran.
Hello? So when I sat down this morning and went, oh, I better figure out what I'm gonna say tonight at the board report, started writing things down, and I was a little shocked at how much we've actually crammed into six weeks. So some of the instructional portion, all the students have went through their I-Ready, reading, and math diagnostics. We have ninety-nine percent of students who have went through all their baseline for the ARC and the ERLA baseline assessments. Grade level PLCs are well underway. Our building PLCs, we're gonna focus on sequencing our lessons and common, common formative assessments. So last year, they did a book study on common formative assessments, so they have the theory. And so my goal is this year that we're gonna do, put that into practice. And so we're gonna be spending a lot of our PLC time on that. Um, several staff members recently attended a biliteracy ARC training. Teachers are doing a great job implementing all the thinking maps in their classroom. Our instructional coach is assisting with thinking maps PD throughout the district. So that's coming up, too. Um, we've been doing some work with Chris Clem, and so I wanna say thank you for approving that contract because she is, she's a godsend. She's wonderful to work with. Um, a cool thing, Mid-Columbia Library, I met with Mickey Simmons, and they have this program called Literacy Links. And they're choosing a couple pilot schools to do this with. They've done it in Othello, and they would also like to do it with Witstran. And what it involves is three classrooms get forty books a month. They deliver them, they pick them up. And so if we wanna do that with them, they're gonna start that in January. And from the research that I've been doing, I think it's a great idea. So they have a lot of access to Spanish books, and it'll just allow different books in our classroom at no cost to us. So we're gonna pursue that one. At the building level, we had our beginning of the year expectations assembly. One of our teachers, Mrs. Swineheart, did a great job encouraging the kids to get away from their screens over the summer, and they had to bring back projects. So one kid brought back this scrapbook. Okay, of all the things they did, we had posters, we had some essays. So she had some really cool prizes for that. Then we did the Student of the Month Assembly. We've had our first fire drill, lockdown drills, completed vision and hearing screenings. We had the balloon rally out in the field. That was pretty cool. PTO, I wanna give a huge shout out to Prosser PTO. They've done a lot of things. So they came out and did the Jog-a-thon, which was great. Then they do their monthly popcorn delivery, so support the PTO. They do great things. Um, thank you to Rotary for the donation for Princess Theater. Practices are underway for that, for the Addams Family Musical. Kids are pretty excited to be doing that. On a personal level, I've been to several trainings, different trainings, doing a lot of the Cell 5D evaluative trainings, did threat assessment trainings at the ESD, met with the I-Ready coach for half a day. That was pretty cool. She noticed that we did not have the Spanish diagnostic turned on, which we were able to access. So a couple of our grade level teachers have opted to redo the diagnostic in Spanish just so that they can compare the results to the kids that took it in English versus Spanish. Um, next week, I'll be going through a breakthrough coaching cycle, which I've been told is a phenomenal training program for administrators and their secretaries. And since both of us are pretty new, we thought it would be a great thing to do. We've got the earthquake drill coming up, picture date coming up, turkey trot. We're really excited about that. We had a community family donate a huge banner, which was pretty neat. That was on Facebook. We've got a couple family fun nights coming up. So yeah, the biggest thing is there's not enough hours in the days, but it's been going good.
Ever is. Any questions for Jelaine?
So Jelaine, on the student assessments, is that something that we'll see soon?
Like the I-Ready diagnosis?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's data I can share with you for sure. I would like to get, to redo those grades that we can test them in Spanish as well for the reading, cause that's something new that we have access to, so that we can compare and see what the difference is there. But yeah, we can send that to you.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, students? Thank you, Jelaine. Appreciate it. Next up is department reports. Sean Cook, Technology Director.
Hi. Uh, this time of year for us is we actually get to catch our breath, so it's really nice to kinda give a report this time of year. Uh, from the middle of May to the middle of September is crazy in our department. Uh, we work really hard. We push really hard to get projects done, but this time of year, we kinda get to fall back into a normal work schedule. Uh, I've been working really hard at updating servers, getting those things back in a maintenance schedule after summer. Uh, the department's been working on things like inventory, uh, catching up our Chromebooks from the summer craziness, uh, general maintenance. That's kinda what we've been up to over the last couple weeks, and just getting back into a normal, uh, work life, which has been nice. Uh, three things that I thought I could bring to you, three nice, exciting things. Uh, in June, I brought a contract to the board for Brightspan. They were going to update our really old servers, uh, which they did, and that project is now complete. Uh, we no longer have any twenty-twelve servers, so that makes me sleep a little bit better at night. Uh, everything is current and supported, just so you guys know, just to kinda keep in the back of your brain in case you're wondering, which you're probably not, but maybe you will after this. Uh, our district has fifteen physical servers, and those fifteen physical servers host thirty-eight virtual servers. Uh, it's a gigantic part of our network. Uh, so when I talk about things that we're doing, that's always a focal point. So thank you for approving that Brightspan contract, cause that was, uh, great for us this summer. Our next big project with our servers will be to replace, we have three door access servers. I'm going to, uh, merge those into one, uh, for ease of, um, for ease of maintenance. But also for, so that fiscally down the road, we're only replacing one instead of three. That will be our next server project. Uh, whether I bring a contract to the board or I just see what I can do, uh, in a department wise is yet to be determined, but that will be what we do next. Uh, currently, Windows ten is end of life, October. I still have three more minutes. Thanks, Kevin. Uh, Windows ten is end of life, October fourteenth, so we've been pushing really hard, uh, to get all of our, uh, computers. We are almost there. We are almost all Windows eleven, so we're at the end of that big push. I know we're in the eleventh hour of doing that, and that's not typically, uh, how I work, but it's just, we just haven't had time over the last year, so. Uh, we'll get there, probably not till midnight on August four, or on October fourteenth, though. Uh, as far as what's on the horizon for us, uh, that you guys will see, our annual E-rate process is coming. Oh, now you're gonna start it? Okay. Uh, our annual E-rate process, uh, is coming up for me. I'll be filing our four-seventy this year. Uh, typically, that's our internet, uh, and we also have a managed service contract for our wireless in district. Uh, this year, I'm also going to try to, I'm gonna file a four-seventy, which is really just the request to USAC to go, hey, we have a need, uh, and I need you to help financially fulfill that need. Uh, my request to USAC this year is going to be that, uh, we have a managed service contract for our network. So currently, we contract with Technologize. Uh, they're like our, oh, no, we need help people. Uh, we pay for that contract directly, so we don't, that comes out of our general fund. Uh, I'm going to propose that USAC helps us pay for that this coming year. So you will see, no matter how that looks or, uh, how that gets approved, you will see that probably on a board packet come March, April-ish. Uh, and, uh, then I'll be back talking to you about that. So that's my past, current, and future.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions for Sean, student? Thank you very much. Uh, and next up is, uh, per discussion is policy forty-two sixty A, facility rental fees.
So in the packet is our current fee schedule, or in your board packet, fee schedule. Um, I'd like to just, for discussion, we have a beautiful facility. We have beautiful, I don't know if it's, but well, operational, pretty state-of-the-art equipment. I think Sean would agree that we're, we're there. With that comes a cost, so when you're looking at operating the lights or operating the sound system or whatever. Um, for many years, we had, at the very beginning, we had SWAT students who got, you know, who got trained and then worked with either Mr. Norris or Miss, you know, the different teachers, and they could help. Through funding, some of those, or most of those types of programs have gone away. Now, many of the students still, for example, in the drama club, still learn how to operate the lights, the different pieces, but it's not part of an official SWAT-type program, right? And so, and most events in our auditorium, let's mainly use it, are at evenings or weekends, which then in turn is really overtime pay if we hire someone to come back. And I don't know that our fee schedule, like when it says IT, I don't think that hourly rate compen, uh, fully covers our costs of that. Does that make sense? Um, like tables and chairs, it doesn't say per one hundred, or it doesn't say, um, does that make sense? I just would like some, I don't know if the word is guidance, but I'd like some guidance as to, we started some work in getting information from, example, Princess Theater or other, you know, they were more than willing to share their fee schedule, right? We'd like to, still be able to offer student organizations and so forth potentially less fees, right? To our clubs, our clubs don't pay, but I'm gonna give an example, and students, you can help me here also. You know, if they do a big event, let's say, I don't know, there's an awards assembly or something. That auditorium still has to be cleaned and ready for the next day. And I'm wondering, and it's a wondering, it's, I have no, I have no ideas behind the answer. Should those clubs, per se, pay the cleaning fee? I don't know. I'm not saying they should or shouldn't, but that's an example. If we do the big wrestling tournaments or the big basketball tournaments, where the Commons, Gym, all of that, right? And don't get me wrong, those organizations are picking up garbage, picking up clean, but they're not, per se, cleaning the bathrooms, right? Or mopping floors. Should there be a fee to our clubs and organizations that use them? And that's my question to you tonight. Another example is we, um, I don't know, I'm trying to think of, if it's a student-driven organization, yet it's for profit, what category does that fall under? Does, right? I, I'm just, there's quite a few of them that are for student things or children, but yet they're for profit. And I need a, I think we need to clarify that a little bit, so. So anyhow, just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
I'm gonna start with the easy ones first.
Okay.
Um, and I think that would be labor. I think all the labor fees need to, uh, represent the actual cost. Um, I think that's the easiest one to attack first, you know, if we're gonna pay, you know, if we need to bring somebody in to do all that, then, um, you know, I, I think it's, it's prudent that, that they get charged appropriately. Um, I would also, you know, as we go down through, you know, the labor and the audiovisual and all that stuff, I, I think it, you know, I think we should have a rate, and I don't know what that would be, but, you know, it should also include, you know, the potential, the, the, whether it's depreciated cost or, you know, that cost of replacement over time. You know, and add that in there, whatever that might be, so that it's, um, you know, things get outdated quickly. I think we just got a new, what, VA system for the stadium two years ago? Is that right? Um, you know, it's not cheap to have, you know, to buy all that, so. Uh, not that it, you know, you're gonna pay for it in one rental fee, but at least it can help, you know, offset some of those cost or maintenance items.
I'll give you an example. We have coral risers, twenty dollars. Well, it almost takes two men and a boy to set up the coral risers, and I'm kind of look, but I could not set them up by myself. You have to somebody need ginned by the time you put them together. The coral risers, you know, where you stand, they're tiered, where like the choir stands on them, right? So they're heavy. They, they do need to be put together properly so someone doesn't fall. And very seldom does somebody need one riser. Normally, they want the whole set, and we have a twenty-dollar fee. And that just, that doesn't seem to fit with the amount of labor and the equipment itself, what you're talking about, but it's the labor and the... So I'm thinking, we have good liability insurance, but if two people go in and put it up, and somebody doesn't push the last brace or doesn't do whatever, and we have twenty kids filling on, standing on it, and it falls off, or that crashes, I don't know, bends over, not, not ceiling falling in, but, and somebody twists their ankle, you know, we're responsible for that as well.
I would agree with Jason. I think to your example of like the bathroom cleaning and whatnot, um, with whoever's using the facility, I guess my thought goes back to the old, like, vacation rental house, and whatever you wanna put into it, it's taken off the bill. So I don't know if that could be somewhat worked out with whatever group is using facilities. Um, but I, I do think any of that stuff that we're putting up, taking down, like, we, we do need to at least cover our costs there and not lose money on it. I guess my initial thought, Ezra.
Coming at this, like, from a perspective of being a part of a club, I think it's a really good idea to make us pay for as a club just because part of those, like, being a part of those clubs is improving our ability to work in the real world and stuff like that. And being in the real world, you have to learn things, so I feel like it's a good idea to implement those skills.
Um, so like, would this mean, like, if choir held a concert, would they have to pay for the labor charges for the facility?
So the answer is I really don't know. So let's say if it's class-related, the answer would be no, right? Because it's that quarterly or, or sub-trimesters program. But let's compare that to drama, right? So the drama program is a club and they practice, you know what I'm saying? So it's a little different. It's not part, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the drama club that puts on a play is not doing that during fourth period, right? It's a club that they do afterwards. So the answer to, like, the drama club example would be yes, but to the choir who practices during third period, the answer would be no, because that's an academic program.
I think that other thing to consider, though, is are they making a profit? If they're making a profit, there's always a cost to the district, that, so, um, I would, uh, being your friendly payroll lady recently, um, there's, there could be an event like, well, a football game's a good example. We pay a lot of people to work at a football game. We take a big gate from that, and the district's paying for that. Not ASB, and I believe that should be ASB, the activities supported by the ASB. ASB should pay for that fee. But if you, like, the example you gave, or I did another timesheet today where we had someone go to a parade. That's a co-curricular activity. Nobody's making a profit from going to a parade. But if we have a big basketball tournament, there's a lot of money that comes in, and there's a lot of custodial cost and other costs that get, that the district has been incurring, and it really should be the program. The other thing that I thought on this is, um, especially when we have outside groups and it says a deposit may be required, I think we should require a deposit that's at least the minimum of the cost. Like, if they say we're gonna be here four hours and we know we're paying a custodian time and a half or four hours, the minimum should be what we know they have to pay and not try to get it later. We're, we're not, I mean, all that billing and stuff is, gets, and chasing people down, that if people wanna use the facility, great, that's what it's here for. But if they're, if they're making a profit, and for some, some groups that are outside, they might just wanna use it, but there's still a cost to the district, and that needs to be covered.
An example is the grand piano. It's, you know, once we pay for it, we've got it, but it has to be tuned twice a year, right?
My research, it does not cost only a hundred and twenty-five dollars to tune a piano.
But that's what I was gonna say, especially a grand piano, and technically, you're supposed to tune it every time it goes back and forth. And I know that we don't have the budget for that, but that's not close enough. Um, so my other comment would be, and I would be, uh, for the four classes, and you were less per day by several hundred dollars. Um, and we have businesses that rent it and charge twenty dollars a person ticket for three or four events. And we, you know, we're losing money on it. They're making, the rent is great, but not gonna be able to get the bill. So I would say, let's look at this and adjust, look at, look at everything. I think, you know, I think that our clubs and classes for the school district should, you know, either be gratis or at minimum, but then cover the cost of going to the club. Should, you know, either be gratis or at minimum, but they cover the cost of going to the club or. Programs, so I think we need to. Providing really. Great service, but.
So what I'm hearing is if it's okay with you, I'll put together something before I go to actually a policy review. How about one more time of discussion? Does that make sense? If I do one more discussion item?
So like renting the middle school gym would be the same renting fee as renting the high school?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, that was.
So Kim, are you saying you would maybe update this rate sheet first and we would discuss it again one more time? I think that's fair or more fair, so that we have some ideas. A lot of times when I bring something to you for like a first reading of a verbal policy, it's a little different, we have a discussion and then bring it to you. I think this is probably a two discussion. Like this is what it is right now, I'm not bringing any ideas to you and then we would bring ideas to you.
Do we have a lot of for-profit? Organizations that do use our facility?
I don't, I hate the words a lot because I don't, it's relative to the person who's asking. Yeah, I would say. A a couple a month.
Yes, we don't wanna make it unreasonable for student driven, you know, activities and.
And we have four lines right now, we have private commercial for profit, nonprofit organizations, nonprofit youth, internal youth. Maybe we divide that out and now have six rows, right, so that it's a little. Right, bear and then we divide it out a little better.
Yeah, I would agree with Elisa though, that I think the rates need to go up.
Is the green room, the band room, the high?
Basically, yes. I mean.
It's, I, I, well, the band room and then there is another space there that has the dressing, like the bathrooms and stuff, but. Yeah, I've seen a lot of outside agency people in that bedroom before, very.
It's in rough shape, represent.
Now, just a couple of comments on this fee schedule then, um. In the internal use, school activities line, I'm a little confused by the hundred dollar cleaning fee being mentioned there, it says no rental charges. A hundred dollar, hundred fifty dollar cleaning fee, but none of the other categories say that on their line. Um, so I don't know, is that, if that's like for all of those space types, they get a hundred and fifty dollar cleaning fee? Or is it still just for the auditorium, in which case, that's for everyone? So that just.
I think the idea was, I I see what you're asking, but I think the idea would be is when you get down to like, um. Rows three and four, there's an hourly fee, which would uncover that except for the auditorium that also had the. Two red asterisks and got a hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, and I do think we need to adjust that line as well, because it might be an internal new school activity like. A giant wrestling tournament and really what we need to charge is not, is not put possible. Not like we need to say paying for all labor costs, because, and I don't like putting a number on that because it changes.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's reasonable to say we need to recover our costs, like whatever those are. Um, in the equipment section, like you mentioned, some of this isn't really clear, like is that a per piece? Or is it, you know, is it twenty dollars a chair or is it twenty dollars for a hundred chairs? Um, so that could use a little clarification, um, the labor piece though, maybe sometimes. There isn't overtime involved and sometimes there is, so I don't know if that those need to be two separate fee schedules, like.
Or you, or you could do normal hours and overtime hours, so if it's a Sunday, right, or. Yeah, so like, for example, I'm at Sean sitting here, so I'll use an example, Israel does a lot of work in the auditorium. And he works an eight hour day and very seldom. Is the auditorium rented during an eight hour workday, right, they do it at night or weekends and then he comes in and it's time and a half for him.
Well, and to be honest, if he's doing it during his workday, he's not doing his work.
Yeah, when's the workday over?
Uh, everybody varies, but between thirty, three thirty and five, depending on the person and what their schedule is.
I'm just thinking about those like activities that are maybe right after school, you know, between that three and five timeframe.
I think what Dan is saying though is if we're pulling him from.
Something else.
Um, fixing a, a classroom projector, he and he's now in the auditorium and that other works building up too.
Probably for the sake of clarity, you would just do one rate and I would choose the overtime rate, right?
I appreciated your comments about, that you actually liked the idea of a club, clubs gain a rental fee of some type, um, because. The students. Real world and so it teaches you. How to live in the real world, um. Yeah, let's look at a new fee schedule.
Any other comments, questions?
We'll bring something next meeting.
Uh, moving on to explanation of travel for special, special education law conference. For special services director, Dr. Jennifer Allen.
Dan and I just wanted to put this on the agenda, cause we have been no travel, no travel, no travel. Um, this, I'm coming to you, it's notice it's in discussion, um, we are going to. Um, allow her to travel to that law conference, our special education law is the thing that is the most. Sensitive, changes the most often and can put us. Her knowledge can protect us and or um, make sure that we're doing all of this, but. A special education changes that are in the law. I think it's. Um, some of the best money spent to protect the district, um, so anybody who's listening, we are not opening up to travel. Um, she really had to convince us, cause we weren't, we said no and she, we should, so it's not recorded. It's not done online, right, this whole thing and it's the once a year. It's a big deal, so we are going to approve for her to travel to that. Nope, no, it's not out of state, I just like, I'm working very hard to be transparent on all spending. Um, and so it would not normally need to come to you because it's in state, but I didn't want, let's say. Next months and you see a bill for a motel and you're like, I thought we weren't traveling, so I just wanted to be very transparent with that.
Any questions or comments, students? Very good, thanks, Kim. All right, moving on to action items. Uh, consultant service agreement for picture this photography.
It's pretty much self-explanatory, I don't even think we have anyone on, I'm well happy to answer any questions.
The high school teachers aren't conferences right now.
I didn't see a cost associated with this at all, is that correct?
The kids, the students pay, we just have to say it's okay for you to come.
Well, I would move to approve the consultant service agreement for picture this photography for homecoming.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consultant service agreement with picture this photography, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, moving on to uh, seeking board approval for the formation of Love Our Elder Student Club at P H S. And I think Michelle is not here, so Olivia, you have the floor.
I'm wanting to start a club at the high school called Love For Elders, um. The proposal basically explains everything, but it's a national organization and we can start a club chapter in our school. And it alleviates social isolation among the elderly and builds intergenerational connections between students and the elderly. Um, the constitution's written below and like the red comment watermarks, those were not meant to be sent, I sent it through my phone really quickly. So you can ignore those, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have one, can you tell us how you learned about this?
I'm not sure, I do a lot of Googling for different opportunities. And I think I just came upon this one day and I really connected to its mission.
Um, I love, love the idea, um, I am. So the way I I'm reading it, you guys are gonna select individuals to write letters to, is that?
Um, we can do a variety of things, the national organization posts. Um, a couple people that are nominated to be written to, so we can write letters to those people and those are. Um, elders from across the country and then I'm hoping to see if we can connect with a local retirement home. And write letters to them and then we can also just do like generalized letters and send those out.
Thank you.
Uh, the only one question, I think it's a great, great idea and thank you for bringing it forward. Um, I guess in your, in your mind, how you see this thing going, other than writing letters to uh. Our elderly community, what kinda community events do you think? Um, you guys could build or 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 put together that. Kinda bring all these folks together, at least within, you know, Prosser and and surrounding area.
On the letter writing community side of it, um, in February, it's national. Uh, it's either like national right to your elders day or national love for elders day. So I was thinking of hosting a community letter drive, so that would bring in the community, um, and obviously write letters to elderly there. And then I'm hoping to like host a Christmas event or something like that for the elderly and then also. Um, I want to connect uh, elementary school students as well, so there's a book the national organization has. That's a children's book that talks about writing letters to the elderly and social isolation. So what we could do is we could go into the schools and read them the book, which the club, the national organization will give us for free. Um, and have them write letters to the elderly as well, so it's not just like a high school students are writing a letter to someone they don't know. I want us to actually build connections with the elderly.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I think it's great, I mean, that we saw such, so much isolation, even especially like during covid and. You know, thing, it it was maybe more of an eye opener as to what those folks go through and, you know, sometimes there isn't people there, but. Um, but I really, I lo- I love the idea and um, be in full support of that. Cause is, and if we could actually, you know, almost make our local community, you know, priority, that would be. That would be especially, I would, I'd be especially uh, excited about that.
Any other questions, comments?
Just a beautiful idea, thanks for bringing that up.
Well, I moved to approve the formation of Love Our, Love Our Elder Student Club at Prosser High School.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the formation of Love Our Elder Student Club at Prosser High School, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you, Olivia. Uh, moving on to the M O U at Princess Theater for the A- the Adams Family Musical Kids.
So this is, I'm happy to say this is becoming recurring, you'll notice the price of the Princess Theater. Um, because two schools agreed to do the same program. Um, and kinda put their dates together and kinda, so everybody kinda compromised, we went from. Five thousand a school to six thousand for both schools and then we got a rotary donation of three thousand dollars. And then the other money for the other portion will come from the A S B. Which we, if you remember correctly, we got the GISA credit union, you know, swipe your. Mustang card and each building got twelve hundred and fifty dollars for that, so I think it's a, um. The positive, um, that we're able to continue with um, a compromise between the Princess Theater, they know how important it is. And I think, um, I wish I could remember, I, so I could have read you the email, but. What they're seeing is more students interested in things as they get older. Um, and that's what the arts is about, right, I think the fear of the unknown is. Kinda sometimes things that hold them back and then they're getting this experience in third grade, right, and.
Thank you, any questions for Kim? I moved to approve the M O U with Princess Theater.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the M O U with Princess Theater, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, next up is the second reading of Policy twenty twenty course design and adoption of instructional materials.
Except for the second to the last paragraph, it's all the same, that was the paragraph we found a little bit confusing. So it's just been amended to basically say there is a list and if the list is available, just. You just need, you ask for it, we'll give it to you, it's available for public review.
Any questions, comments?
Um, I'd like to know who comes up with the, the course designs as teachers and.
Um, so the, so courses are really designed, so there's two things, there's curriculum design and course design. Uh, for the primarily course design comes from the work in the buildings. So we wanna have a course, we wanna have, we have a local history course at the. High school that Mrs. Keen teaches, they, high school actually designed that course when they were trying to offer some more. Elective options for kids and then materials, because that's local history, they're primarily local historical. Information from the museum, there's a lot of texts out there that are written about the history of Prosser. But um, if it's a, say it's a science course, it's still designed by the teacher, but it really is driven probably more by the curriculum. And the instructional program that they follow, so it kinda depends, um. When you're looking at like a C T E course, you know, they have frameworks they have to follow. But the day to day of what happens in the class is really the teachers' design or how they are implementing it. I don't know, Kim, you have anything to add to that?
I was trying to think how like of an example I could give.
Yeah.
Um. If we're learning, um. Let's take a math subject, I don't know, solving for X, right? Um, the, the teachers work together on how they're gonna design the course to s- to teach that piece. The curriculum is what math curriculum we're using, the course design is how they're going to work together to teach that. At. I don't know, students, you know, foil, if you were all can remember first outside, inside, last, well, when you're my age, when you're sixty. We just memorized it, we didn't do it, we didn't ask why we did it that way, we just said, oh, this looks like a foil problem, I do first outside, inside, last, right? That was just what we did, now the concept is we need to understand why we do it in that order, what we do, how do we do that? So it's not a rope memorization that that's that problem, because if you can remember. If it didn't look exactly right, we didn't know whether we used foil or not, right, if it didn't met the model and so I think that's what we're saying is.
I think also, if you talk about course design too, it's how the teacher determines like what kind of assessments they're gonna use, was their classroom structured? Like each day, what kind of, um.
Kevin, Mr. Curriculum, got something to add to that?
Come on, he must have something.
I, I think, um. Um, let's take a C T E course or an art course. Um, like we added the ornaments that were done, the big ornaments that are done at Christmas and that became a part of the art. Program and that course then had to change because some of the projects changed with the inside of course. So the curriculum is what we look at and we adopt a curriculum. And let's pretend chapter two may be taught a certain way and it's designed by the teacher, but not the top. That help?
Yeah, when I initially looked at the, the policy, I mean, I, I didn't really, it didn't really, nothing alarmed me too much until I read the R C Ws and. There's, there's just, you know, some things in there that I'm, I've got some concerns that are age appropriate. And I'm wondering who actually um, makes sure that that, that that is happening, who decides what is age appropriate?
So there's a lot of thought that goes into curriculum design and and selecting course materials. And the reality is that's, we, whenever we adopt curriculum, we have a committee that does that for like, we're adopting core curriculum. So you have a committee that includes administrators, teachers, parents, sometimes depending on what it is, there might be counselors, nurses. Depending on the like, when we're doing health or something like that, so there's that, that committee. And then, um, and we're always considering kid, the appro- what's appropriate for kids or not, what's appropriate? What's best for the kids of Prosser, not just what's best for kids and then also we're always looking at that, that whole developmental. And then also, we're always looking at that, that whole developmental, the idea of, it came across there. It was pretty interesting when we were doing the, adopting the new sexual health materials. Depending on the curriculum we're looking at, they could be so vastly different. Middle school was a place, there was a lot of difference. And the committee themselves were like, uh, we don't think, this is really not what we think is best for our kids, and chose something that seemed much more appropriate. So that's always, all of that's always considered. There's not.
I'm going to give you an example, because this came up when I was a building principal. So some believe in math that you teach algebra, geometry, and then algebra two. And some people believe you teach geometry in ninth grade, and then you teach algebra one, and then algebra two. Right? So that's an example where nobody's really saying we need, do we teach algebra one or algebra two or geometry? No. They're saying what order in which they learn them in. And some will argue that the spatial stuff in, in geometry helps pique the interest in ninth grade. Then there's people that say, well, you can't really do geometry without some basic understanding of algebra. So we do algebra and then we do geometry. Those, that's just an example of, of the difference between what you're kind of talking about, Frank, right? Like age-appropriate, like it's still high school, but what order do we teach it in?
Yeah, and, and the laws are, are pretty confusing in some, some places. I mean, obviously.
For sure. Lots of lawyers are making lots of money trying to decipher.
And it's really easy, you know, to adapt policies just so that we're in compliance, we're in compliance. But, you know, are we really doing what's best for the kids, for their education and protecting them? And I just want to be very mindful of that. I, I didn't see anything in here that concerned me about our policy. The way it was written, it just, it's just looking at the way the laws are. I just, I just want to be very mindful of that.
Frank, we're always trying to do that.
I just say that mainly because I get a lot of, I'm getting a lot of feedback, so.
Yeah, and every curriculum adoption that I've been a part of, and even some go in a little bit more deep, a little deeper than others with outside members, community members being a part of that, looking at all aspects of that and providing feedback and making adjustments. So through a curriculum adoption process, it's not just done in isolation.
And I think the feedback would be very critical because, I mean, at some point we have to connect the dots. Are, are we losing, are we losing kids because of the curriculum? Anyway, that's all I got.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I'll move to approve the second reading of policy, course design and adopt materials.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the second final reading of Policy 2020, students. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next up is secondary science adoption recommendation.
So we've been talking about this for quite a while. We had our open review time, and I will tell you, no, we had, we put out, we had newspaper article or ad in the paper that ran for two weeks and like an ad with a red line about it. It cost us more money than I thought it should have. And we put out the, a parent square message to all of the families. I had zero people asking to review the curriculum. Um, I know previously, earlier, a few months back, I made it available to board members. I don't know if, I talked to the high school teachers, but they're doing conferences, so I don't know if they were able to, they were going to try to be here, but I don't, they're probably not able to be here yet. So this is the curriculum for our secondary science. It is not all of our courses because we still have CTE science courses and our college and the high school courses that have, will have the same curriculum. See, the college and the high school courses have to offer the curriculum that the college offers. So these would be for our core biology, physical science, and chemistry courses. And our teachers are pretty excited.
Why don't you share about the money part of it?
Sure. So originally when we, I did the, got the quote for three years of implementation, and that one include like, you know, a set of teacher materials, it would be the teacher materials, the online materials, a set of student materials for the classrooms for students that either don't want to use online access or just need the book, the printed book. Our teachers really feel like that's much more essential even for ninth graders, as our students get a little older. They work better maybe online, and some kids never like to work online. But just last week, so that was about thirty-two thousand dollars, or sorry, about thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars, and we have thirty-one thousand dollars of a grant, remember that we got from PNNO. So last week, the science teacher said, Deanna, we really think we have to have, even though there's a Spanish online, we need print materials in Spanish for kids who are, are Spanish-speaking. And so that did add some cost, about, about fourteen thousand dollars to get print, about seven to eight books in every class. So those were available for our Spanish-speaking students. So overall, the adoption is about fifty thousand dollars, not the original like thirty-six thousand dollars that I thought it was going to be. We're going to look at some options for maybe how we can pay for that, but we, I was, the money was budgeted for the curriculum adoption. This is, it was a really small amount. It was a lot of money last year and we didn't adopt. So I have a small amount, but it's enough to cover the adoption costs, so.
And I think the piece, we're watching cash flow, you'll hear me talk about it a little bit later. We're going to try and plan it accordingly to when our taxes come, or, you know, our, our tax come in and that type of thing. The other thing is, is we're going to try and do it so that we don't lose our PNNO money.
Yeah.
That's another part, right? You have deadlines to meet grant windows.
What is the deadline?
So we have to spend the money within a year, but they give you the money upfront, so we have the money. We're not paying for it and then expect a reimbursement. We already have it.
When's the?
Uh, I, I'd have to look exactly what day we got the check, but it was like in eight, March or April.
Okay.
So we have time.
Oh, okay.
We have, we have a year, calendar year, so we have, we have about six, about five months or so to make sure we spend it. So Kim and I talked about that, a ju, timing the, for cash flow to make sure we're doing it at a time where we have the cash flow.
Would this be adopted next school year then?
No, well, we're going to use it this year. They, the teachers are, once it comes, then they're going to, they'll finish whatever unit they're on, and they're going to start in their new curriculum. So they're excited about that.
Overall, what kind of feedback did you get from the teachers?
So the teachers actually piloted multiple curriculums. Gosh, it's hard to remember now because we've been working on this for so long. At least three and maybe four.
Middle school, I think, was.
Yes, and they came to a consensus, the three of them was, like, there was several curriculums they liked parts of, but they wanted to put this part of this one with this part of this one. They didn't find something they felt met the needs of the students. Some curriculums they felt were so hands-on that they didn't, students weren't expected to read content, and that's really one of our standards. They need to be able to, to read as well as to have the hands-on applications. And this one they felt had a really good balance. It had the assessment support. It was online. It has the parent support, has like some supports for students who might be struggling readers. So they just felt like, I mean, no curriculum is one hundred percent. But this is the one that they all were like, this, this is the one. And it's been really hard to get to this point. Really, again, like I said, started before COVID. We've been working on this, so I'm, I'm really happy for them. They've been, you know, we really, yeah, using old stuff or making their own stuff up or finding stuff online for so long. This will be, we're pretty excited about this.
I think one of the most important points of the cover sheet that was made is that in the first sentence, this is the first completed comprehensive science curriculum update for grades six through twelve for more than twenty years.
It might be longer. I knew it was at least twenty, but it might be longer, but I didn't exactly know how many years, so I just rounded to twenty.
But great work to the committee and everybody's thinking on, thinking after that COVID.
I'm, the only thing I have, and it's partially my fault, is I have yet to review the, the curriculum.
You still can. It's in my office if you want to take it home.
Then I'll do that tonight.
Okay.
And my question is, can we move it to the next meeting? Has everybody had a full chance to review the curriculum?
No, I would agree with that. And again, probably my fault, partly my fault, but I would really like to spend a little more time looking at it.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I have no problem. I, I don't think that's a problem because we won't actually order till no, probably November, so I think that's okay because we'll still be in October. We want, yeah, our timing is November, so I don't think that's a problem. And like I said, I have two whole sets of the material in my office and another, like I have each of the contents, so I can hand out three of them tonight.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind having it. And like I said, I think it's my fault that I didn't do it earlier, but.
I've only talked about it forty-seven times.
I know, I know. It takes that, we'll just.
I won't hold it against you. It's okay.
But I'd also, if we can, send out another email.
We can.
Parent square, as well as maybe Facebook that says, well, it's open for another couple, well, until the next board meeting, whatever.
Yeah, we would probably, if we, well, I'm not probably going to spend the money to put it in the newspaper again.
No, I wouldn't.
That's been our past practice, but we can put out another parent message. We can put it on Facebook. Um, I was, parents is who I'm hoping to reach, but I know there's a lot going on, so.
Deanna, is there anything vastly different between what you shared online with us and the print materials?
No, it's the same. It might just be easier sometimes depending on our navigating skills or time just to be able to look at a book, just like the kids. Sometimes it's better to look at a book, but no, it's the same.
I don't need to make time then to come look at the book. Um, this isn't related to this particular science adoption, but is there still at some point, and I, I mean, I really struggle to bring this up knowing our budget constraints, but are we going to still look at middle school science curriculum at some point?
So we actually would have recommended both, the middle school, the committee, part of the committee was the whole committee, but really middle school worked on middle school and high school worked on high school. Struggle to find a, an agreement to a curriculum. But I'm hopeful, because this is actually a K-12 curriculum, that once it's implemented at the high school, we can do a little maybe collaboration and communication and, and become something that they could consider. It isn't a curriculum that the middle school considered at the time. But, but I think there's maybe some hope there, that we do have to have money.
This one they did not ever look at of the four.
They did not, only the, they looked at probably twenty-five though. So it's, yeah, it's been a challenge, and sometimes we struggle a little bit to let go of our past. So, yeah, but, but money-wise for us right now, this is okay. Curriculum-wise, it's not the best, but because we don't have something for the middle school, but baby steps. And if, and if what we're doing now is cost, is this is the cost, I do think the middle school adoption would be quite a bit more because of the collaboration kits and some of the other things, and probably even though they do it online, we might need more print materials. Middle schools is more appropriate maybe for them, but I think if we, we work and we work through this, maybe that's something we would be able to.
Sometimes like us, if they see it in action, then they can go see it happening in class and, and see what that instruction looks like in that course design, right? What does it look like? Then that may also sway the decision.
Yeah, I mean, and I think too, there's probably some benefit in consistency in the curriculum, right? If, if it's a success at the high school, setting the kids up kind of with the familiarity with that curriculum at the middle school level.
Very much so, because they set, like, it's, like, the structure's the same. The kids know where to look for resources. Like, once you learn it, you don't have to relearn how the book works or how you do the assessments or those kinds of things, so absolutely.
But I hope that's something we can talk about in the future.
Students, you have any comments? Well, I've moved to postpone secondary science adoption recommendation for the October twenty-second meeting.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to postpone the science adoption recommendation to the October twenty-second meeting, students. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Deanna. Appreciate it. Uh, next up is vouchers and payroll.
You have it in front of you. I know the sheet is not blue, but it is the same piece. Delise is not with us this evening and welcome. Any questions?
I did have one question, and now, unless I'm off, off on a few weeks, that we only getting ASB payables now? And we'll get correct, regular general fund warrants?
Yeah, you'll, you'll hear about that in my report after I meet, met with the county.
Okay. So that's on purpose.
That's on purpose.
Okay. Well, I move to approve vouchers and payroll. It's been moved and seconded to approve vouchers and payroll, students. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, that concludes our action items. Moving on to consent items, one through four.
I'd make the motion to approve, approve consent items one through four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve consent items one through four, students. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to reports. Kevin, you're up first.
Actually, today, I finished meeting with all of the buildings around Thinking Maps PD. And so we have a PD cycle set for, for each building. It's designed and flexible enough to meet the buildings where they're at and kind of move them forward. Um, next steps will be meeting about math PD. KRV, I still have left to meet with them. And then the middle school and high school, we had a conversation with last week about some math PD and kind of the direction they wanted to go with that. Uh, we had our Biology, Art PD last Friday. I had my PAC officers meeting last Wednesday. We worked on the calendar for the year. Uh, we dug into data around where our students are at and the budget, planning that, going forward with that. Uh, I have one grant left, and then we finished the big one. We had some revisions on that, but I finished the revisions, submitted that. We had a school visit to Pasco. We were able to go through their one-way and two-way immersion programs and kind of to see what that is. They've reset their dual-language program around two thousand eighteen, nineteen. So that was just kind of an example to see where we're at compared to other districts in the area, because we've had our dual-language program for quite some time now. For example, if you didn't know this, Richland is just now starting a dual-language program, which that was new to me. I thought they had been a part of that for a while, but no, they're just starting it. And there are several schools that are just starting it, so. Panorama, we're finishing up our student surveys that those actually end tomorrow for the little ones. Right now, we have seventy percent completion, three, three grades, three through twelve, and seventy-five percent completion for pre-K through second. And then the parent survey was released today, went out today. So we'll be getting those responses and sharing some of that information with you as that's finalized.
Thanks, Kevin. Any questions for Kevin? Thanks, Kevin. Deanna?
Uh, so I, I guess I, the things I have to report are more just, because I've mostly been working on payroll and most recently HR. I just want to say that Kevin has been a fantastic help to me because he's taken on a lot of things that I would have normally done to free up my time to assist with these other responsibilities. Raul, I've worked a lot with Raul this last few days especially, and he's a really quick learner. He asks a lot of good questions. He's doing really well, and I'm feeling really positive about his hire. I think that's been really great. We, Kevin talked a little bit about some of the training and things that we have going on. And we do have parent conferences going on all over the district, and we usually have a really great turnout rate for parent conferences. Um, I wanted to address what Jim said, talked to, talked about with the substitutes. So i, in the past, under previous superintendents, and this could go back a ways, we never allowed anyone except someone with a bachelor's degree to substitute. And then early in my tenure in this role, I asked for reconsideration on that because we had people with AAs. We were really starting to work on those grow-your-own programs and having people become, work for us and then maybe come and teach for us. And so we did open that up to people that had an AA and then were in an education program. Since that time, we've opened that up a little bit further. We have parent educators that have AAs. Some of them are at programs and some of them are not. Since that time, we've opened that up a little bit further. We have, um, parent educators that have AAs. Some of them are at programs and some of them are not. But they have a lot of classroom experience. So we have several parent educators in our district, um, that have an emergency substitute certificate as well. We have not ever allowed anyone without, um, an AA and one of those two areas to substitute in the past. Um, so it is something we could talk about. Having an degree doesn't necessarily make you a good sub. And, uh, not having one doesn't necessarily make you a bad sub. So I do think if we were opening up to people who really had no experience working with children or plans on working with children, because most ed programs have people in the classroom, starting very early in their ed program. Um, we would need to provide probably more professional development for those folks before we put them in the classroom. The other thing that I've done with some of our folks who, um, maybe lack some of that experience is I've asked them to substitute as a parent educator first. And then once they've substituted as a parent educator and have some experience in the classroom, because just coming off the street with zero experience working with kids, I would, it would be a little bit of a struggle throwing them up in front of a classroom. So those are just some things to consider, but you brought up some really good points, Jim. I appreciate that. Um, it's something that I think we can talk about as a team about, and it, sometimes it is also on a case-by-case basis. Um, sometimes, um, yeah, so we do have a, uh, next year we'll have our first student who was in our grow your own bridge program. She's a sophomore right now. She'll be a junior next year who pretend, who's literally 20 years old. And, uh, so, or will be 20 years old. So those are all things to consider. You know, we don't, um, we, we truly can't just hire anybody. But, um, and I am working on getting subs hired. It's a process and I'm learning how to do it on my own right now. Uh, but, uh, people should reach out to me. I don't know anything about the, I, I, I can, I'm not surprised about being told about the ed program. I don't know anything about the two people that you're particularly talking about because I didn't speak to them. They're welcome to email me. Um, I will tell them, I take a little bit of time right now because we're getting through this month's payroll stuff. Uh, but hopefully in the next week or so, I'll be kind of freed up to be back a little bit to normal. So, uh, so I can get caught up with some of those, some of the other things going on. So ultimately I will tell you, normally if someone wants to become a sub, it's me that says yes or no. Okay. And, um, but I don't, I don't think I know about those two. So, because I haven't had anything recent. Okay. And that's it for me.
Great. Thanks, Deanna. Any questions for Deanna? All right, Kim, you're up.
Um, just a clarification, if you're following along on the agenda, Delise is not available this evening. If you have questions on the financial statements, let me know. Drew, um, his name is Andrew, Rob, R-A-A-B, um, will be with us next, um, board meeting and will be available for questions. Um, our year end is due to the ESD by the 25th, which is then due to OSPI by the eighth, and you'll have a full report at the first board meeting in November. Who's presenting all of that will be up in the air between Drew, myself and/or Delise. Okay? So that's just to bring it to speed there. Um, you've got my report in front of you. Um, the property thing's pretty quiet, um, on the parcels because as we've talked about the waiting on the city planning, we did have a couple more showings on the Grand Tabby property. I think people are just struggling. It's zoned, um, a couple of different ways, but I don't think people always know quite what they can do and really know grass and something. They do certain things, right? There's some investments there. Um, times are tight or is tighter or tighter than ever. Um, I do want to share a little bit about this. I met with our county treasurer and his team. Um, we are going to start meeting every, uh, the third Tuesday of every month at 1:30. Um, it was very, so I'm, I'm gonna, you know me, I just tell you everything. Um, I walked in and you know, felt kind of like I was going to the principal's office and I walked in and I said, you know, actually what I said to him was, I feel like I'm going to the dentist. He kind of jokes and he says, that's all right. I use Novocain. So I mean, it kind of broke the, the, the tension, right? We talked about cash flow. We talked about whatever. And what a professional, first of all. But he really opened, um, Drew, Drew went with me to the meeting, uh, about one was this, Kim, every school district we're working with is in the same short paper wars. The other thing he said was because every district is experiencing the same thing. And I'm telling you, if you're listening, because this is a legislative problem, right? Meaning it's a state problem. Like we have to fund education differently. Um, but he says, because there's so many school districts in my county, you're all needing my support. And their coffers are only so big, right? Um, and so we, we had a really good conversation. The other piece that he shared was you and your board are very proactive. It was a compliment to us. Cutting, doing, right? What the county, so people understand, actually, a couple of people in the last couple of days have said, I, I keep saying, here you go, say you're going to the county, you're going to the county. Well, I don't think people realize the county is our bank. And I, I think there's this idea that we go and we go down to Yap Fed and we deposit our money. That's not how that works. So the county is our bank. I mean, their holdings are held by KeyBank and different things, right? Does he want him getting it? But our, our funds go through the county. And so, um, I just really opened up a really sincere dialogue about the problem with cash flow. The other thing that people generally don't understand is the state of Washington does not give a school district, think of a calendar 12 months. They do not give us one 12 of our money every single month. Well, our teachers get paid one 12 of their salary every month. Well, some months they give us 5% of our money and some months they give us, you know, it's just kind of funky. And it was initially designed, so I got a little history from our county treasurer. It was originally designed because your taxes are due in October and da, 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 da. And then you get money in October and November, right? And so then those months you, you have a bag or coffer and then you don't need as much help in December and January. It also goes back when teachers used to get paid 10 months out of the year. Teachers went to 12 months about 25 years ago or so. Oh, before you? You're, you're longer than me. So, okay. So, but he says some of the rules that are still in place on those percentages were even before teachers had, used to have the option, I believe you could be a nine or, I'm not looking at you, but a nine or 10-month courses at 12 months.
On a side note here, this has to deal with this. My grandmother was a teacher in Wapato. She told me that she went on unemployment during her day, her months off. So that kind of forced the state to relook to, to look at the allocation of the salaries because they were able to go and get unemployment.
So, so it was quite a good history lesson for, not history, but a financial history lesson. So I'm just telling the community, um, it, it was really good partnerships. You know, I'm about partnerships. You're sitting here, the partnership with the Princess Theater, the partnership with the pickleball people, and now the partnership with our county treasurer. So I just, I think it's really important that we know that, um, that, that it does take all of us together to figure it out. We left, in leaving, like I said, we're going to meet the third Tuesday of every month at 1:30 to look at how things are going. And he says, you know, Kim, I'm joking, but I'm serious. It's just paper and toilet paper. That's it. Right? Meaning like when you have to cut back and you have to, in a school, right? Meaning he was saying it's bare bones. It's like, right? And so I gave him example of the travel being on the board packets. Um, so those are things that we're working on. Um, legal, I'm happy to say, um, there's nothing open or pending. We did have a letter from the IRS about our VIBA and that's not on your list. So that is coming up as a discussion item before long. Facilities, we have a late growing season. It's been pretty warm. Our grass is still growing like, like crazy, except irrigation water is off. So, um, I have a little note on here. Be prepared for long grass. Um, because our mowers are done Friday. We did give them an extension. They were supposed to be done on the first, and I was afraid we weren't going to get everything mowed one more time and they really needed to be mowed. If you would like to be a friend of the field, if you're a neighbor, I'm just going to give you an example. If you live by KRV and you would like to mow the front left corner and you want to weed eat it and do whatever, and if somebody else wants to take the right corner and you want to be a part of that, we're happy to work with that. I verify that you're covered by our insurance, things like that. So we have that open. Um, so I did say, are you interested in weed eating, mowing or helping us get ready for winter? Just give me a call. Um, we have a lot of, um, community members that are very proud of our community, our schools and, and opening that up to you. Um, we're still working on the design phase. It's not going to go fast for Ecap. Um, we probably would have done a meeting last month, but, uh, Deanna and I, between payroll and HR. Um, thank you for the maintenance, for striping our lots. We've heard some pros and some cons. Everything has a stripe on it. Yes, it's not the fancy white reflective paint. Um, yes, it'll probably have to be done. But as I put in my note, it only costs us the paint because we did it during our normal hours and now at least people have a place to, to park. Um, and the irrigation water's off. I'm, did get to meet with all the principals. We're back on our, on our rotation. Um, I know Deanna doesn't like it when I, I give her big thanks or make public things, but I just want everybody to know historical knowledge is a valuable thing. And Deanna's historical knowledge, um, saved this district when we were doing payroll last month. Um, and what I mean by that is I can go in and, um, do someone's payroll or I can do whatever. And, but Deanna can catch it and go, I don't think they're a five-year. I think they've been here 10, 11 or 12 years. And she can catch things that your historical knowledge, right, can catch that somebody who doesn't have the historical knowledge doesn't catch. So I'm going to publicly thank you. And, uh, we have a new task in front of us. Now we're working with HR. So that's going on. Um, transportation, um, the, uh, Benton Franklin Transit stuff is going great. We did some work with Whitster. I know Jolene's not here. We got that worked out. High May, our transportation director and Jackson are working together literally every morning at 9:30 to see what we have to tweak and what we have to do because we just don't have enough drivers. So if you are interested, um, in doing working mornings only, or you want to run an afternoon route only, there are union requirements. You can't just say, I'll do the football trips or something like that. Because those, you know, there are union requirements, but we really, really could need some drivers. We do pay for your training and then, right? So you get paid while you're training and we pay for the training. Um, and we could really use, we really need about four. Um, and if we get you in, um, you could be, say, I'm only available on Mondays and Tuesdays or whatever, right? But we need some substitute drivers. Bad. Um, and then, uh, went, I did get to do some of my normal things. I went to the Chamber of Commerce meeting. I'm going to Rotary tomorrow. It's on my calendar and our capital committee meetings tomorrow night. That's it. Unless you have any questions, unless I forgot. Oh, Mr. Wyman, look at your phone. I called you back about four times. I realized you weren't practicing. I am going to answer a couple of your questions here. Um, shoot, except my computer went to sleep. Um, one was the irrigation. It's, so it got an extra dose of water that week because I knew it was going off. Um, the science curriculum does include the professional learning support. We're going to get you that. That's those pieces. We are working on, I'm trying to get to the root of your question about absenteeism and Skyrid. So it panorama, we talked about panorama has some flagging systems. Um, and then we do have daily reports that come out that, that tell us what it, what I think you're asking me is, does it pop up and say, Tommy, like, does it, like a warning, like your bank or something? Does it say, Tommy's been gone three days this week? No, we don't have that kind of a flagging system. But principals and secretaries and counselors are able to run reports as often as they need to be in their setup. And then panorama has a feature that the staff will be learning about as well. And then the other one, we can touch on. But I did, I'm going to be honest, I forgot to email you back. I read it while I was driving in and I forgot to write back. Oh, I admit, when I forget to email somebody back, I admit it. Oh, I looked at it while I was driving. Yeah.
Any questions for Kim? Thank you, Kim. Uh, next up is board reports. Michelle?
I don't personally have anything, but I did want to thank, um, Jim and Tessa for coming in and talking. I think it's really important that the community come in and share feedback with us when you have it. And so I just, um, we don't often get many people here in our audience, if anyone. So just thank you for coming in and taking the time to share with us your thoughts. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I want to thank Tessa and Jim as well. Um, it's always good to have people voice their concerns, good, bad, or indifferent. Um, opens up conversation and hopefully it'll lead to more dialect here in the future between you guys that came in. Um, I heard from a couple of people as far as parent teacher conferences that, um, think things were looking well as far as attendance. Was told by a high sc- uh, yeah, staff member at the high school that they were on pace for, by an all-time attendance record for parent teacher conferences. So it's good to hear.
Right?
Yeah, um, just want to thank you guys. I know we've all said it, but I had it on my notes. They stole it. So, um, but no, the, the community input is, is critical. I, I believe that. And I've gotten a few phone calls this week and, and it was, it was really interesting because I was able to, like, a lot of the things, it's just having that open dialogue is very important because you can, you can stave off a lot of things that, that could turn into something big. And, you know, just answering simple questions. And so it's, it is very important that we have open dialogue and we get input from our stakeholders. But, um, thank you for everybody who, who's reached out to me.
Lisa?
I, I don't have a formal report either. I would just like to thank Deanna and everybody that's working. I've started to do not just your everyday job, but the other job, I think. I say that a lot of that. I think one of the hardest things in life, having to clean up a mess you didn't make. And I think you're giving a lot of time to that. And I think everybody that came in and spoke tonight, and I agree with Frank, like the more dialogue and discussion you have, take care of the issues while they're little.
Um, I didn't have a lot. I think it was well said by everybody on the, uh, the board here. Um, I would encourage, I don't know how many we have online, but you know, if you have an opportunity to, to spend a few minutes and look at the science curriculum, you know, you've got a couple of weeks to do it. Um, you know, and part of that is just to have input by everybody, uh, you know, to, at least to look at it. Um, you know, and if they provide input, that's great. But if we don't get a response from anybody, parents, um, community members, stuff like that, you know, but you know, we don't know. We can look at it, but I think, you know, just like everyone said, you know, open dialogue, uh, have discussions and we get things done. So remember that. Science curriculum, you got two weeks before it comes back. Um, with that, just the future meetings, we'll have a regular board meeting right here, October 22nd at 6:00 PM. Uh, no further business. This, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.